For July 15th to order, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right. Roll call. I see Director Veach, Director Butler, Director Green. I'd like to make a motion to excuse Dr. Panegis. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Which has been made second by Director Veach. All in favor?
Hi.
Director Butler. Okay, let's move on to board comments.
Oh, you're calling in? Hold on. Robert says he's calling in. Does he need to be allowed or unmuted?
Yes.
Is Dan around to do that?
Yep, he's right here.
Are you the 4746 number, Robert?
That's Julie Dixon.
Oh, okay. He said eight one something. There he is, Motorola Razr. That's him. I recognize it anywhere.
Can you hear? Can we hear?
It's still connecting, it says.
Oh, okay. You must have a different view than I have.
Can you hear me? Yay.
Oh, now you gotta mute. You gotta mute your thing.
I know, I know, I know. Got it.
All right. Do you want? I never want to start with Director Veach because she needs time, so. Director Butler, do you want to start with any more comments?
Um, um, um. No.
Okay, moving on, Director Veach. You have any?
Okay, I can't figure out. Is that echo just me or are you like doing that intentionally?
No, that's happening.
Okay, just checking.
You're muted again while Dan's trying to figure out what's causing the echo?
No, he muted himself on his phone, but I think his computer wasn't.
Yeah. Board comments. I would just like to, I guess, recognize all of the efforts of. We met with the reopening committee and all the efforts that all the members in the teachers, the administrators, the community members are making to try to bring together the best possible option for the students here in Granite. And I'd just like to call out and recognize the efforts of everyone who are trying with very little, you know, consistent information from the highest levels. We're constantly changing and we're adapting and we're still moving forward and and we're doing good work and we're gonna have hopefully some, not even hopefully, we will definitely have a plan together and just recognize those efforts because it takes a lot. It takes a huge village to make this happen and we're doing it. So, thank you.
Awesome. Director Green, you having comments?
Ditto on Veach's and enjoy my summer, so I have no comments.
Awesome. I've got a couple. So, since this is likely my last board meeting as board chair, I wanted to make sure that I said a couple of words, especially to my colleagues on the board. It's been an absolute honor and a privilege to lead these last couple of years and I appreciate your trust in me and your vote to allow me to do this. There's been a ton of stuff that we've done on the board in my tenure and there's a ton of stuff that I'm extremely pleased about. But I think the thing I'm most pleased about is finding Dr. Middleton and getting Dr. Middleton to lead our board or lead the district, sorry. I think he's exactly the right person that we need at the right time and he's a wonderful, wonderful asset. And we, the board, we evaluated Dr. Middleton Monday evening and in that evaluation, we were all extremely pleased with his performance. We certainly expect continued growth and success, but we all were very pleased with his performance and it was certainly my pleasure as one of the last duties as board chair was to extend his contract another year and super grateful that Dr. Middleton was enthusiastically accepted that. And then also, you know, again, to Dr. Middleton's credit, him understanding kind of the big picture financially where we're at. He was willing to accept an extension of his contract with no change in his salary and understood that we were in a tough place and was willing to forego that increase and I'm very appreciative for him to do that. I see Robert twice now in my screen. So, just again, thanks to the board. Thank you, Dr. Middleton. I really appreciate it. I don't say any of that lightly. Everybody here on the board has been, I'm just so happy that we have such a productive, functional board and I just, I appreciate you guys, so. All right. Moving on to item three A, use of force policy 5196. I know Dr. Wolverton isn't here. It's written only, but is there any questions? I know I had some.
I also have some.
You want to start?
Well, I guess I'll let you start, but I wasn't sure how to. Like, how do we ask the questions because she's not here?
I think even if you ask questions and we don't have the answers tonight between Gail and Karen and myself, we can put together responses, so feel free to ask those questions. We'll take notes and get those out to you.
Okay.
You want to see if we're thinking alike? Director Veach, you can go first.
Or, I think at first I want to mention that, so this is my third year seeing this report and I know, what was the timeframe for the report? Is it, was it just like from September through March 12th? Is that? Is that the timeframe?
That would be correct, yes.
Okay.
Other years, it's, you know, the entire school year.
So, I have seen improvement. I'm still very concerned about the numbers coming out of Mountain Way and I've heard an explanation in the past that because the students are younger between the ages of five and eight, right? That there may be more restraint just because they could run out into a parking lot or something like that where, but I'm still concerned about the fact that Mountain Way has more numbers, more restraint and isolation numbers or incidents than all other schools, including Discovery in the district, right? I like the trend that we're going, but this is the third year that the numbers have been high and I don't understand. And I'm also concerned about the staff injuries while restraining. I like that, I mean, luckily, there wasn't students that were injured, but still, you know, nine staff members reported injuries and yeah, so I, can somebody explain to me what what the pathway is to make this better? Like, in September? Like, how does that work?
I don't think we'll report tonight, but I know that one of the reasons we hired Mrs. Wilson was because she and the principal, Mrs. Weddell, is because of the strong behavior background and programs that they want to put in place, so. That's sort of an overarching question, but we'd be happy.
I know that it's not an answer we have tonight, but it is a concern that I've had and it continues to be a concern because the age of these students, these are not angry middle schoolers or, you know, near full grown adults at the high school. These are children between the ages of five and eight, right? And I know that an angry five-year-old can be like wrestling a bear sometimes, but anyway, I guess I more wanted to call that out. Carl, I'll let you ask the questions, I guess, initially.
Can I jump in and ask you last one quick question, Carl?
Please.
It's just so similar. So, I know in the past, we've heard that the hats report, like, as far as restraint goes, for example, if they grab a kid, stop them from running in front of the school bus. We've heard that in the past. Is that still the case? And if so, how much of it is made up of incidents like that? And then what are the severities of staff injury? Is it anytime, you know, they, like, I'm just curious about severity. If this is a case that we have to report every little thing, or are these true numbers? That's what I really want to know.
So, and I, of course, can't speak to, you know, what's happened, you know, the contents of this specific report, but what I can tell you as, you know, coming in, that this is an indicator of a need for more training for staff on how to intervene with students before it gets to that point. And so I know that you, we are a right response district and, you know, the primary tenet of right response training is that you only put hands on a student when safety is in question. The safety of the student, the safety of those around them. So, I'm a big, of course, supporter and proponent of that because we shouldn't be putting hands on kids unless we need to intervene because they are in harm's way or another individual is in harm's way. So, you know, you were asking kind of about next steps moving forward. That will be my next step as the director of special education is to work on further training with staff on, you know, if you need to put hands on a student, that you only do that for safety reasons, make sure that everyone is up to date with right response. But, you know, the other premise of right response is that it's a last resort and so there are other interventions and strategies that need to be used with students before it gets to that point. But there's a training level involved in that and staff needs to feel, you know, that they have those tools in their toolbox to utilize. So, that's where I stand, you know, with this. Like Dr. Middleton said, I can't, I can't speak to the specifics and I'm taking notes as you're speaking, but you know, that is, that is heavy on my heart and I appreciate, you know, your sensitivity to that, particularly with younger students. We just don't want to cause any undue harm and, you know, those types of situations can cause harm to the students who see it happen to their peers as well. So, appreciate that.
So, I have a couple of concerns. What school year is this for?
This is the current, well, the year that just ended, so the 1920 school year.
So, where it says 1819 is incorrect. Table below contains the district's 2018-19 school year restraint and isolation data in the format.
And then later on, it refers to 1920 again, so I, that was probably a typo as that was typed up.
Okay. So, is that something that we want to modify before we send off to the state then, or do they get this report? Do they just get the data?
They get. It goes through our, it goes through the state system and honestly, I'm not sure if that's been submitted or not. If it has not, we can make that correction.
Okay.
And if it has, I am happy to reach out to them and let them know of a clerical error.
Okay. So, I guess, not to belabor the points that my colleagues are making on the board, but, you know, if you just look at the trend, so I, and I've got a split screen. I've got 2018-19, I guess legitimately 2018-19 pulled up on one screen and the new one on the new. And if you look at the, if I just, so this was, this is data for, what, four months? Three months? Four months? Well, I guess we had school longer than that, so.
September to March.
September to March. So, all school year, last year, we had a total of 49 restraints and 52 incidents on 17 different students and it looks like in this data, we have 40 restraints, 31 incidents. So, I mean, if you just do the math, you know, per day, it certainly seems like, I guess the point I'm making is the instances seem like they were on an uptick. If the data would have run for all year, that it would have been significantly higher. And I know, Ms. Wilson, that, you know, obviously you can't answer for that and I'm certainly not asking the question directly. I guess I'm just putting it out. It certainly seems that we're trending in the wrong direction, so there needs to be, you know, some sort of, as you mentioned, specific training or intervention, something that goes specifically to, you know, what we're seeing is going in the wrong direction. In addition, I guess the thing that also raised an eyebrow is that previously last year, we had four people in Mountain Way, four people in Monte Cristo, two in middle school, one in high school, and a kneecap that were all right response trained, the escalation trained. And this year, we only have three at Mountain Way, one at Monte Cristo, one at the middle school, one at the high school and nobody that was in the 2018-19 right response training is currently in it. So, I guess that raises an eyebrow too, that, you know, is it so challenging that people are saying, I'm not doing this anymore? So, I mean, it's different people and a less number. So, I guess, again, I know this is all coming at you new, so if you don't have feedback on that right now, that's okay, but I guess I would be interested to hear any feedback you have on that also.
Absolutely. So, you know, my philosophy is that right response training is beneficial to anyone working in the K-12 setting, whether it be food services, bus drivers, classroom teachers, et cetera. It is not arduous training. It is comprised of self-reflection as much as it is techniques, you know, behavior 101, how to intervene before you would ever have to put hands on a student. So, I'm a big proponent, you know, of right response training. I need to dig deeper in into that to see who has been right response trained. And of course, certainly, no one who is not right response trained should run the risk of ever putting hands on a student. So, that right response training is, you know, our liability insurance, so to speak, because there are additional safety measures that protect the person, the individual who has been right response trained. So, certainly, you know, we should see increasing numbers of that. Dr. Middleton and I need to have a conversation about me transferring my trainership to your district. There's a process with right response for that to happen, but I know you also have someone in district, at least, who does that. So, we do need to make sure that we're up to date on that. We need to make sure, you know, my my desire would be all special education staff should be right response trained. And that includes certified and classified. So, certified teachers, classified, particularly, you know, anybody working in a one-on-one capacity with a student. But it's good, robust training for anyone and I made it a requirement in my previous position and I think it served us well. So, that
Without an annual recertification training, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So, everybody takes it every single year type of deal?
Correct. If they've never been trained before, it's a two-day training. If they are renewing their annual training, it's a one-day training, so.
Is it in-person or online? Like, with this current situation?
With this current situation, they actually have been doing the modules, but not obviously the hands-on demonstration, you know, piece because you can't do that and be socially distant. So, it is a little bit different right now for the time being. But definitely that would be a goal of mine. I think it's great training, like I said, for any K-12 district. And last year, I trained all of transportation in Sultan because they're the, you know, the first point of entry for our students in the morning and the last at the end of the day and, you know, their classroom. They have their back to their classroom, right, on wheels and, and so there was, you know, some added safety benefits in that. But definitely for sped staff, I believe that that's important. I would even, you know, I've had school counselors, I've had other, you know, I've had administrators. It's just, it's good, it's good training. It's important and I believe that that's the direction that we can move toward and like I said, embedded within that is some training on how to manage behaviors before they get to that point. So, I think that that's well worth it, but just by looking at the report, I can tell you that more trainings needed. I will take a look at who has been right response trained. I'm sure that, I'm sure that's coming close to renewal, so we'll need to take a look at that. At the very least, our staff working in a one-on-one capacity with students definitely should be currently right response trained.
And just to clarify, as I'm looking through the information, I think I had my charts mixed up, so there there were, there are some carryovers, people that in those schools, the right response training that are this year. I apologize for misstating that earlier. But I guess the RBT, so Charlie was messing up with the people who were, I guess, RBT trained. It says arbitrees who work under the guidance of the district's board certified behavioral analyst. And I remember from Monday, we don't have a BCPA right now, so do you mind quickly just walking me through what the plan is there?
Right, so, Dr. Middleton and I have talked about that and in accordance with the WACS, it's very specific that RBTs need to be supervised at a minimum by a BCPA for, it states 5% of the time that they are providing behavior support to a student per student. I am still trying to put parameters around the number of RBTs we have, which 13 seems to be the number we're landing on, getting names attached to those numbers and then looking at each individual IEP to determine the service provision that those RBTs are providing in terms of behavior support for a student. So, we, so that is a math problem in the works for us to determine what we need to provide in terms of BCPA supervision at a minimum should they remain registered behavior technicians. The other piece that I'll add on to that is that if, in fact, any of the individuals who are registered behavior technicians are also showing on this isolation restraint report, that's another indicator of, is that behavior training a successful situation? Is it a good fit? Sometimes it's just not a good dynamic between the student and the staff member, so we would look at that piece as well. But I would expect those individuals to have a little step-up level in their training, as they should, to be able to manage those behaviors. So, math problem in the works.
Got it. Well, I personally just wanted to say, as much as I can be a part of the solution here, because this feels like a situation that definitely needs some specific and kind of concentrated attention and, you know, as whatever I can do as a board member to support you, Ms. Wilson, in kind of turning the tide of this and, you know, whatever support you need, you know, I certainly want to dedicate myself to doing that. I mean, I don't want this to be the conversation that we just have once a year because I'm sure, just like me, the rest of the board, you see these numbers and then you do the math and you're like, whoa, okay, that's significant. And it always kind of hits us out of left field every year that we look at it, which is kind of what Director Veach was alluding to, where you're just like, wow, okay. And, you know, in a situation, you know, the numbers that aren't shown here, not to get on my soapbox, but quickly, but the impact that this is having to the learning environment, right? The other kids that are in that classroom, the other kids that are, I mean, it's completely disruptive and then on top of that, staff and other people that are also getting hurt, you know, in this wake and there definitely seems to be, and I know we have had this conversation as a district, as a board, several times. I know this isn't a Grandpa specific problem, that this is, there's lots of districts that are battling this, but darn it, I feel like we can be best at this. Like, we can, we're the right size to figure this out, you know?
Absolutely. And I first wholeheartedly appreciate your support and your kindness and and I just, I thank you very, very much for that. And as you mentioned, Director Veach, it does take a village and I very much appreciate this village and I counted a blessing to be part of this village, so thank you. And we do this work together, absolutely. You know, what I will say when it comes to behavior is that all behavior is communication. And so when those students are, you know, in our eyes, misbehaving, they are not meeting an expectation, but yet they're still communicating and some lack the skills to communicate appropriately. And so we see physical aggression and, you know, violent behavior and things like that. And so we, as a staff, need to become educated in what it is that they are trying to communicate. And, and so I take that role very seriously in supporting my staff to decipher what it is that the student is trying to communicate and then teach them strategies to use that do not cause harm. Because it does cause harm to them when, you know, we have to put hands on. It causes harm to those who see it, those who go through it. It's a, it's a whole process. And I would welcome and encourage the board to sit in on any right response training if you haven't already because it's really good stuff. It's wonderful and it teaches us how to be in our right place before we intervene with students. And, you know, the importance of self-care and all of that, so I thank you and I will draw upon that support. And yes, we will get better and yes, we can be at our best. I totally believe that, 100%. And, and so, you know, this is a baseline right here. This gives us a starting point and I'm confident that we can move forward in a positive way. But this is a, this is a great place for me to see where do we go from here and what's needed.
So, I just have a couple of questions for Dr. Middleton. Are you, are you done with your questions? Carl?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Just two quick things. When, when we get this report next time, the next time we publish it, can we just add the definition of restraint and isolation? Just to be clear, so that we, as a board, understand, because I think I know what restraint is considered and an isolation, but I do remember in the past, Sarah giving us a definition from the podium, but maybe just including that definition in the report. So, we're sure that, I mean, maybe it's not as shocking as we think it is, but I think it is. And then, could we take a look at this again? I mean, more often than once a year, would it be reasonable to think by end of October, like the second meeting in October, we could take a look at it?
Yep.
Just to, just to see where we are and, and maybe include in that same report, how many have been trained or whatever, the reporting that Carl was referring to about who's received the training. And, I don't know. I mean, I guess my big concern is Mountain Way, so I can't tell you how to do your job. But those kids are little and I'm concerned. I'm concerned, so.
Yes, we'll do that.
And yes, I will take you up on the offer to attend the training. Sounds fun.
As will I. Go ahead, Director Butler.
Awesome.
Oh, Director Butler, we can't hear you. Sorry, buddy. And you're not muted. I don't see a mute button by your thing. Are you still called in, Director Butler? I don't see your phone number up anymore. Okay, okay. We'll move on. If you want us to come back, though, we'll come back. Are there any other questions? Director Green, you have any questions or anything related to the report? I'm not calling you out, just before I close out, just wondering.
Fine, no, I understand. It's all good.
Okay. Director Butler, if you get back in, we can go back and even though we're closing out and moving on. So, moving on to item 3B in the agenda, business report. Take it away, Marshall.
So, I'm just asking, asking to receive questions on the report that was published and I'm not sure how much you want to go back into the Um, so I'm just asking, asking to receive questions on the report that was published and I'm not sure how much you want to go back into the uh budget session we did on Monday.
Can you hear me now? Yes, I can hear you.
Hey, hey, real quick, the only thing I wanted to add, um, kind of going off what Director Veach was saying was I was curious if we could uh delve a little deeper in the report that we get and break it down by grade, by grade level. I'm curious how many restraints are for um, our littlest learners, you know, kindergarten, first grade, those who are still trying to learn to be students and learning behavioral skills.
Yep, go through that. Yeah. Have that.
Thank you. Um, so uh, we, we didn't approve a budget or anything as of our, it was a study session, but um, if you want to hit the high points, Marshall, I don't think that's a bad idea.
Sure. Uh, do you want me to share it on the screen or do you want me to uh verbally go over it?
Uh, why don't you, if you can share the screen, I think that'd be great, do, can we do that this meeting?
I can do that. All right, so it's been my experience that turning it into a presentation mode causes problems in Zoom, so I'm gonna keep it just in the kind of edit mode to go through, but I think they'll see the slides. Good enough. Um, so kind of a quick, quick highlights, we made some assumptions going into this budget. Um, we assumed that enrollment would be flat, or we would just roll all grade, all students forward a grade, reduce kindergarten by twenty-five percent. And the result is two thousand ninety-four student FTE, which is an increase of eleven from our March closure. When we closed in March, we were on upward trend, if we were able, we've been able to count in April, it would have been higher than what it was in March. But we were frozen with our um March count. Uh, so that budget has eleven more than what was at our March count. Um, so then we used that FTE of students to generate uh revenue using the state apportionment tool. And then we used that student headcount to budget for expenditures based on the um twenty ninety-four students. Um, budgeting for expenditures kind of required us to hit our class size targets and have the appropriate number of teachers in the budget to teach those twenty ninety-four students. Um, we also made an assumption that we, we have a special needs student that will be likely attending a specialized out-of-state school, but that school is currently closed. Uh, the cost of that is approximately six hundred thousand dollars a year. We're assuming that that school opens up in time for them to attend that school next year. Don't know if they'll be open or not. Um, this includes an offsetting contingency for revenues and expenditures of a million dollars, just in case we get additional funding and need to increase our expenditures, it's, it's offsetting, so it has no impact on the fund balance. We included a estimate of sixty thousand dollars for timber revenue, that's the same as what we received in nineteen twenty, we just like to have a line item in there so that we're showing that we're, we expect to receive some timber revenue. We never know how much it is until after the fact, so we just put in the same as we got last year. And then we're assuming a one million dollar um award and safety net for next year, we received one point two million this year. We have the same needs next year plus the six hundred thousand R students, so the request we would, would do is probably going to be closer to one point eight million next year. But we don't like to count on a hundred percent of that, so we just went with a, a conservative million dollars in that revenue. And we're assuming that we have a beginning fund balance of four hundred fifty thousand dollars going into next year. Uh, next page is our enrollment forecast, it just kind of.
You mind pulling up that page, Marshall? It's still on, just the first page.
Advancing.
I don't know why it's not advancing. I did.
Oh, it's fancy.
Sorry to throw a wrench in the works, I've just been staring at fiscal update.
I'm sorry. Let me just try and go to the next slide and see if that updates. Yep, okay. All right, so um, just so we can look at the original, the first set slide really quick. Got to summarize everything I talked about, um, flat enrollment with a twenty-five percent reduction in kindergarten, revenue expenditures based on that enrollment forecast, special needs student is in the budget. Um, contingency for expenditures and revenues in the budget, sixty percent timber, sixty thousand dollars in timber revenue, a million dollars in safety net, beginning fund balance of four hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, enrollment forecast shows that we're twenty eighty-three in March, we're forecasting twenty ninety-four, essentially we're moving everybody forward a grade and reducing kindergarten by thirty students. Um, it shows an increase because we had a really small graduating class and we've been having large um lower grades coming in. Uh, next slide is showing, showing our beginning fund balance. The revenue generated by the state apportionment tool is thirty-four million, three hundred forty-seven thousand, four hundred seventy. Expenditures um generated to meet those students are million twenty-three thousand. Ending fund balance of five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars or one point five percent. Now that little asterisk there is kind of, we think there's probably going to be a range of ending fund balance based on our ability to claim safety net, so it could be anywhere from the five fourteen to about one point three. I know it's a big range, but there's a lot of unknown about the students, the, and our ability to claim safety net.
Among other.
Quickly, uh, the expenditures breakdown, so the first column is the twenty twenty-one budget. Uh, well, the second column is twenty twenty-one budget, third column is the nineteen twenty budget. The fourth column is the nineteen twenty forecast, which is basically just what we spent through July eighth and then everything we have encumbered for the rest of the year, so it's by, by this time of the year, it's a pretty good forecast. And then the last column is just for comparison, what we ended with eighteen nineteen. So uh, certificated instruction is going up by about eight hundred thousand dollars. Classified salaries is up about fifty thousand dollars, benefits is up about six hundred thousand dollars. Supplies are down a little, contracted services are up primarily because that's where the um special needs contract falls. Travel is down about forty percent from the forty-one thousand this year to twenty-eight thousand in the budget. And capital outlay is flat, um, and there you see the, the total in the budget, the thirty-four million. Um, so I like to call out the risks that are in the budget, there's probably more risks than this that we haven't identified, but these are the, the major risks that I, that we've seen. Enrollment, um, we did a family survey a while ago that indicated the vast majority of our families want and really want to return their kids to school, but this is changing day to day and we really have no idea where our momentum will land. If not for COVID, if not for the COVID closure and the uncertainty around that, we'd be budgeting to increase by about another hundred students. Um, and each student is approximately ten thousand dollars in revenue. Um, so uncertain about COVID-related costs, if we are in school, there will definitely be increased in cleaning supplies and PPE, there'll be an increase in custodial expenses. Um, and a custodian fully loaded, fully loaded meeting with benefits and taxes costs about sixty thousand dollars. Additional nursing staff fully loaded is about seventy thousand dollars and we'll certainly need to make some workplace safety improvements. Um, safety net is a risk and it's especially big risk this year because we are going to be front-loading even more money than we usually do and waiting for the award to come in, in June or July. Um, substitutes with the risk, there could be an increase in staff absences due to the climate, um, more sicknesses. And property tax is certainly a risk, there's a potential for an increase in property tax defaults, although we did not see that. We, we got a, nearly a hundred percent of our property tax uh by the end of June, so we did not see that currently, but certainly based on things we're seeing in the news, there's a, there's a significant risk going forward. Um, and then some contingencies we've gotten placed to help mitigate the risk and help us respond to the risk. We are currently sitting with ten, we're on, we're on a hiring freeze except for really, really, really crucial and essential employees. We're holding open ten unfilled classroom teacher positions so that if we lose a bunch of students, they decide not to come back, we have a little bit of a cushion to address that. We have the unfilled BCPA, which we're looking at options on how to partially fill that, fully fill that, not have to fill that. We have an unfilled special education teacher, which we're holding open um, just depending upon what school next year looks like, and that, that total is with benefits is one point five million dollars. We also are, and, and those, that one point five billion dollars is in the budget as expenses because the students are in the budget as well, so this, this, if the students drop this, we can dip into this one point five million to help address the enrollment drop. Uh, we have six unfilled classified positions totaling three hundred twelve thousand dollars. Similarly, if we get to a point where we need to look at that, we're able to look at that, we, we have these positions in the budget, but they are not filled yet because we're hiring freeze. There's also two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in coaching contracts in the budget that if we have no sports next year, well, we won't be having any coaching contracts and the possibility of no sports is a real possibility at this point. Um, another contingency would be the way we would, similar to how we did at the closure, we would part, partner with our associations to temporarily reassign existing staff um, to positions of need uh in order to avoid possibly having to lay off staff in one area and hire them in another area. Um, and then also if school is in a limited function and there's no field trips and there's no sporting events, we would, we would show a savings in transportation and officiating costs, and officiating costs is fairly significant. And the transportation saves would be, could be fairly significant as well. And then the final piece of this is, you know, we, going into this year, we looked like we were going to be in a, or going into twenty twenty-one, we looked like we're going to be in a good spot to actually address some of the really things that we've needed for a long time here. And this is kind of a list in no particular order, some of the things that we were hoping we could address this year, but they're really kind of all on hold right now until we understand what next year's going to look like and probably on hold indefinitely until we understand what you know, if, if we bounce back at some point next year and then are normal the year after, then we'll, we can start looking at more of these. Uh, they're wants and needs both, I mean, I think it could be a first-class school district, we probably need everything and more that's on this list. Um, any questions about the presentation?
No, I appreciate you going, well, I mean, I guess I, I have a, a question and a comment. Um, I know that we, uh, but I don't want to jump ahead of anyone else, did anyone else have a, have a question or anything? So just kind of recap in Marshall, our, our, our board study session um Monday, I know we had a lot of conversation about fund balance and the um, kind of the needs related to our fund balance. Um, uh, and I'm not going to go over all of that right now, but um, I'm looking at your report um, that you're submitting in the, your business report, what, what is our current fund balance?
Uh, I believe it's somewhere around going off of memories, I haven't, I don't have that one up right now, but it's somewhere around eight hundred thousand dollars to the negative.
And if I read in your report, you said due to taxes being held back, we're going to go further negative?
I will go further negative, actually, we'll go, yeah, we'll go further negative in June because we didn't get our full taxes until the end of June and some of it actually took it in early July, so the June report will be a little further negative. And then July and August, we dig ourselves out of the hole because the way the apportionment formula works, we get twenty-five percent of our state apportionment in the last two months of the year. And we'll also get our one point two million dollars in safety net at the end of the year, so really it's it's probably close to a third of at twenty-eight to thirty percent of our revenue will come in the last two months of the school year. So because we don't have a fund balance, we, we dig ourselves a hole and then the last two months, we dig our way out of it.
So I, I, I pulled up recently, we were audited, um, I guess here's my comment, we were recently audited by the state. I just, I, I just want to read a, a snippet uh from the, the audit that was reported, it says description of condition, although operating, and we had two findings from that audit, and one of those findings was the district's financial condition places at risk of not being able to meet financial obligations or provide services at current levels. Description of condition, although operating revenues increased by about thirteen percent from the prior year, operating expenses have continued to exceed operating revenues for the past five years. The district has experienced a negative operating margin for the past five years and shown before. District's fund balances continue to decline over the past five years, especially in the last two years because of these continuing declines. At the end of the fiscal year twenty nineteen, the district was able to sustain only one day of operating expenditures as shown in the table below. Uh, as a result, the district is at increased risk of not being able to sustain operations or continue providing the same level of services. Uh, effective condition, district revenues have not kept in place with the district's expenditures. And at year end, only had a fund balance that could only cover one day of operating expense, expenditures. If the district's financial condition continues to decline, it might be able to, is unable to sustain operations or continue to provide the same level of services, so. I know that we've done a, a couple of things to, to change that, we, we've got a, a recently updated board policy of a five percent fund balance. Um, I know Dr. M is, is working really hard and, and doing a good job, um, we're gonna, we're gonna have, should have an increased fund balance as you show of one point five. Uh, if this budget moves forward and everything uh goes as planned. Uh, with the plan that's been presented to the board at previous meetings to have a five percent uh by the following school year, right? Stop me if I, if I'm incorrect.
Twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Twenty-one, twenty-two school year, so I, I, I say all of that to just say that, you know, I'm, I'm, I've, I've I've always been fiscally conservative, but um, I feel the immediate need to be even more fiscally conservative than we already are. Um, we are going to have to really be very focused on cash um, moving forward if we're, if we're ever going to dig ourselves out of this hole. Um, we had a long conversation at the study session about, you know, uh, having to carry a million dollars of safety net money in our, um, in our budget and how odd that is, I mean, considering other districts wouldn't, um, they'd have their fund balance to rely on, so. Um, I, you know, we, we just really, 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 even more than we've, we've been in the past, need to be fiscally conservative. Um, and that's, that's, I'm not saying I'm the only one on this, I know the board is, is, is also on this train, but you know, I, I'm, I'm going to be that guy this next coming school year where, you know, we're, we're spending money, we're going to have to talk about it. Um, so I, I just, we, we, we're improving the budget or anything like that, but I just make sure, I wanted to say all of that.
Carl, I just want to say, um, I find that report frustrating, seeing as how I feel that they have the district in the wrong percentage bracket, us being down at what is it, twelve, when I believe we should be up at the eighteen?
Maybe even twenty, regionalization factor, yeah, you're talking about.
Right, right. And so I, I, I'm frustrated with that report when they don't even acknowledge we're in the wrong bracket.
Yep.
Just want to put that out there.
Agreed, a hundred percent.
Well, let alone the fact that that report from the state called us out for funding issues caused by the state.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Frustrating for all of us. I think everyone in the community is frustrated with that.
It's, it's extremely frustrating, but I mean, we, we're playing the hand that's dealt us. And certainly not saying that we don't continue to work hard to talk to our legislators, to show them that we are in the wrong. We're definitely been handed a, a, a very tough deck of cards, but it is what it is. And I, I just, you know, I.
But all that, can we do a rebuttal against that, you know, finding against us? Because I, I think it's, it's messed up.
Yeah, I think, don't we, didn't we respond, Dr. Milton, to the findings in the report? I don't have it pulled up.
They, they do.
Oh, we did, yeah. We, we did respond. So I'll, I'll read that, that's at the bottom of this, I should scroll down. District's response, respond to all the finding, the district acknowledges as experience of decline in fund balance over the previous five years, primarily due to payroll costs. Increasing by ninety-three percent. As a result, the district has put in place several measures to reverse this trend. This measure includes five percent minimum fund balance adopted by the board of directors, three-year roadmap to achieve five percent balance. Quarterly calls between the business director and ESD discussing condition. Roman increase and living increase in twenty twenty-one resulting in increased revenue, collective bargaining in twenty twenty-one for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year for both PSC and GFEA. This plan is intended to achieve the five percent minimum fund balance by the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. As per the newly adopted minimum fund balance. And may the auditor's remarks where we appreciate the steps, we will review the condition during our next audit. So anyway, I, I, I don't wanna, you know, I don't want to take us too far off, but I, I guess I just wanted to say, if, if, if ever you guys say, why is Carl? Why are we pushing so hard at this? I mean, we, we just gotta, we gotta scrape, I'll say it again, Marshall, every bit of moss off of the rock. That we possibly can.
Carl, I, I appreciate the board's focus on this because it's my focus too and it is. Difficult to sleep at night knowing every day you've gotta kind of prioritize very, very, very severely what you, what you want to do with every day.
Absolutely. And, and as I said earlier, I appreciate Dr. Milton, you know, we sent his contract and him. Being agreeing to extend the contract with no change in his, in his compensation package. I mean, I, I appreciate him understanding kind of where we're at financially and, and, you know, taking one for the team. Thank you. Okay, do we have, do we have any questions on the business report? Marshall talked about the, kind of the budget, but we haven't really necessarily talked about the business reports. Or are there any questions related to that? I mean, we touched on fund balance and stuff like that.
I had a couple, just as I scrolled through, and Marshall, maybe you've explained this to me before. I, I'm looking at the, the debt services fund balance. And I, I guess I don't understand the gap that keeps continuing to. To be between what we budgeted and what is actually happening with the revenue and the expenditures.
It'll catch up at the end of the year. The, the budget is just spreading it out over the twelve months and the revenue doesn't always come in. And the expenditures do come in at the point where their budget, for the most part, but the revenue doesn't always come in where it's budgeted. Because of the way taxes come in.
Okay, so it looked like, I guess, in December of twenty nineteen is where there's a lot more. Like I'm looking at the spreadsheet, you know, versus the Excel chart. And up until that point, it was pretty close and then we're kind of off by half a million dollars. But the gap continues to widen and then there's. A one point five million on the expenditures, it says for June, but I'm like, we don't have the. Do we have the revenue for that? I mean, I see it, I see it there and I'm concerned about that. I guess I don't.
Kelly, what are you talking about, Director Veach?
So I'm on the debt services fund spreadsheet and I guess, oh, it's page twelve, page twelve.
Awesome.
So our, our, our fund balance as of June will be somewhere around three point nine million dollars. So paying fifteen, paying one point five million, we're gonna end the year in that fund with about a three million dollar fund balance. So we, we have plenty of capacity and debt services.
Okay, I just am, I guess I, I. For May twenty twenty, we said we budgeted four point six million, but we're only at three point nine. That's okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I, it, we're just missing a lot and then we're gonna spend more?
We, we won't have the, I don't remember the exact amount that we paid for our bonds in. When we paid them in June, but it was less than what we thought we were gonna pay. We only had to pay interest on one that we thought we had to pay interest and principal on. So I think our expenditures will be less in June than what we budgeted.
So does that mean that we're gonna have to pay that interest in some other month or that it's not due this year?
It's not due this year.
Ah, I see what you're saying. So when I scroll down to the, to the fund balance. On slide or on page fifteen, sorry, and I see that the expenditure, the actual expenditures. Like, or I'm sorry, the, on the fund balance, the actual. Fund balance is far less than what we budgeted. I should not be concerned about that. Because somehow the revenue is going to come in some other way and we're gonna, we're gonna even out.
We'll be at three million. I mean, I looked today, we'll be at three million dollars at the end of the year.
So we'll still be off by a half a million dollars off our budget. Like, if we're at three million at the end of the year, do you see what I'm driving at here? There seems to be this five hundred thousand dollars that's like, that's not gonna be there. No matter how far down we travel in this year. So I don't understand what happened, like where's the half a million dollars?
I will.
And it's probably my ignorance.
I'll do a deep dive into that and send my entire board a email tomorrow.
Okay, all right. I, like, I'm totally willing to say that it might be my own ignorance in reading these spreadsheets. So I just thought I would ask the question.
Yeah, so I, I think the question, just saying it a different way, I get what Director Veach is asking is. You know, we've set a budget for a three and a half million dollar in fund balance and that, I, I hear you saying three million. So is it gonna, is it three, is it three and a half? And if it's three, then what happened to that half a million dollars, right?
Yeah, I'll do, I'll do a deep dive into it. It, I mean, it can't go anywhere. It's restricted only to be paid for. The bond costs, so. I'll, I'll do it. And it's, and that's not handled by us, it's handled by the treasurer, they take the money out automatically, we don't do anything, a bond, it's just an in and out. So I will do a deep dive.
Okay. And I guess, tell me quickly, we don't do a ton with that transportation fund. But the budget has it, something happening in May, which I think happened in April. And then sort of it, it just plummets to June and it sits there. So. I don't understand what I'm seeing.
We only use that transportation fund to buy buses. That's the only thing we can use it for, is to buy buses.
Okay.
We don't always buy them when we predict that we're gonna buy them. I mean, a lot depends, and we don't have any buses pending right now, so we'll probably carry that expenditure that is budgeted. And I, I'm just going off memory, we'll probably carry that balance into the next year. We won't purchase any buses this year, any additional bus. So that, that expenditure, so we get the revenue of the last month of the year and it'll be about a hundred thousand dollars. We budgeted to spend on a bus in May, but we're not gonna do that. So we'll carry that budget. The money that we're gonna spend on that bus will carry forward into the next year.
Okay, I got you.
We'll reassess how many buses we need next year.
Okay. All right, thank you, appreciate it. And then, yeah, if you'll just let me know, because probably the explanation is simple, I just thought I'd ask the question on that.
And that, that debt services, services fund, just letting you know, we don't, that, that money is just allocated for. Or assigned to expenditures for principal and interest. So it's not used for our bills and, and all of that other stuff. So I'm assuming that it's, it's something, as you said, you alluded to, Marshall, related to that. But the, I think the question Director Veach is asking is very valid, is, is, well, are we ending at three or three and a half?
Right. And just to, just to expand on what you said, we, we have no ability to even write checks out of that account. It's all handled by the treasurer. They, they.
So we get to audit the treasurer for once? Yes.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Okay, great question, Director Veach, appreciate that. Any other questions related to the business report? All right, we move on to item three C on the superintendent report. Take away Dr. Rem.
Thank you and thank you for the comments and the opportunity to be here. I have to say, I, I started to laugh, I did laugh out loud when Mr. Chair used, used the word productive board. Because that's very refreshing. So thank you for that. I'm sharing a screen right now or attempt to share a screen here. All right, so I think everyone can see Granite Falls School District Superintendent Report is up, you see that on your screen? Okay, great. So what I, what I wanted to do is really the big question is what's twenty twenty-one going to look like? And we don't know what it's gonna look like tonight. But as referred earlier by Director Veach. We have had a reopening committee meeting and that second meeting is occurring tomorrow night. We've also had a chance to sit down with GFEA and, and start having some conversation. And the purpose of both of those meetings is really to collaborate with our stakeholders. One of the things that we did in, in all of our meetings is just really reviewed what we know, discuss what we don't. Develop those listed questions that we need to ask and then start having some initial conversations of what school could like, look like. While following the CDC guidelines. And I, I know I shared this with you, but I thought for the purpose of, of the public. I could share this, just what are some of the things we do know? And I, I want to reiterate all stakeholders, so our teachers, our administrators, our parents. We all, and, and people at the state, we all want to be in school, we want to have that normalcy. We want to be doing the jobs that, that we enjoy and love doing. So Superintendent Reichtal has issued the following criteria though. He did ask, and this, this is now week, weeks, months ago. To start planning for twenty twenty-one with a hundred percent of the students back at school and in, in the fall. And quite honestly, it's, it's even three, maybe four weeks ago when he was still stating that. Things change so quickly, but when he was talking about a hundred percent of students back at school. Certainly masks will be required, there's that wellness and temperature assessment upon entrance. Hand, hand washing protocols need to be put in place. We've talked about the social distancing that needs to be in place. The exception, of course, is, you know, if a teacher were to check on student work, then there can be that walk by. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, last board meeting. We talked about the irony of bus riding seems to be okay for fifteen to forty minutes. So those are, that is allowed. Plans for reopening needs to be submitted to you. You will be the ones to approve what we come up with and that has to be two weeks before the start of school. And then submitted to OSPI and Department of Health. It really is the county health department and the state department of health that are calling the shots when it comes to safety and health. When Superintendent Reichtal speaks, he always says, yes, we want to be back a hundred percent. But districts really need to be planning for a hybrid model or a hundred percent, and a hundred percent remote learning. And I think when he talks, when he, when he speaks about this, he's saying when school resumes. In fall with some of the kids in school, some of the kids at home. There'll come a day when there'll be a COVID case in a school. What are the procedures that you close down, do a deep clean? And instead of losing that next day of instruction. We need to have a very fluid system so that we can go right into remote learning and not lose days and then have to make them up at the end of the year. So he's looking for a system in place that, that addresses that. We've been told all along, funding will be in place regardless of the model, but with greater expectations than spring of twenty twenty. And what I mean by that is in terms of student attendance, student engagement and student work that would be assessed. So that's some of the things we know right now. I want to share what our families. Responded to our survey and quite honestly, that was a survey almost a month ago. And I guarantee these numbers would be different and we need to go back and survey, survey again. But at that time, forty-eight percent of the family said they'd like to be, have students in school a hundred percent of the time. Thirty-four percent were more comfortable with more of a hybrid learning experience where they're in campus, on campus some of the time. And learning from home all of the time. And then fourteen percent of the families would prefer a hundred percent online. The top concerns, of course, of course, were the close quarters of students. Not following health standards set by the Department of, of Health. And just the ability to disinfect buildings. When it comes to our staff. We did a district survey about the same time as we did the parent survey. And let me go back, with that parent survey, we had over seven hundred responses to that. So that's hitting, you know, that's gotta be hitting a thousand or well over a thousand households. So I, I thought that was a good response. On our district survey, this was asked of the entire staff. So teachers, administrators, classified. And at that point, again, about a month ago, eighty-seven percent said, yeah, when school opens, I want to return. Ten percent said, I have some hesitation. And then some percentage I don't even include, you know, say, you know, I, I might need to just do something differently. In working with GFEA, and I, I have to give a shout out to GFEA because they've been a great partner from the start. Of our closure on March twelfth through our, our conversations today. We've, we've been able to meet and discuss and have really points of agreement. We really do have the same, same interests. The interest of getting kids back in school, instruction and of course, a safe environment for our staff and, and for our students and, and. Parents. They have done two surveys. So their survey in June, about the same time as ours. You know, similar, except they're just. Go away, they're looking at their membership of GFEA. Seventy-two percent, yeah, returned, twenty-eight percent said, no, that might not be best. Their recent survey. Isn't quite a flip, but it's, it's significant. Forty-four percent say, yeah, return. But fifty-six percent said, I think we need to think about something differently. On both of those surveys, a good turnout. On the district survey, which included everybody. We had over two hundred, two hundred and fifty responses and on the GFEA response or survey. They had a hundred, approximately a hundred doing their survey. So I feel like it was a fair sample size to get that feedback. The last thing I want to share, some of the other points of interest. I, I mentioned, GFEA presented us when we met yesterday with, with interest statement. And those interest statements are really very much in align with our statements. We want to bring students back. We want to have a safe environment, a safe environment regardless of whether it's remote or all in person. Whatever, we, we want it to be a safe environment. And both of us, of course, are concerned about equity. What will equity look like if, under a hybrid model or remote learning? So we have a lot of common interests that we want to, want to address in this time. We also have a lengthy list of questions of how we reopen. And their list is about 100. We came up with about 70 questions. And it's everything from on the academic side to operations to safety. Lot of questions we need to address, especially if we lean toward a hybrid model. But I do want to share tonight that I think two weeks ago, we were going down the path of a hybrid model being a reality. But we all watch the news. We all are keeping tabs on infection rates and virus. And we're seeing the spike across the country and even in our county and our state. That really, we need to have a two-pronged approach here. And yes, we need to talk about a hybrid model, but we need to be really honestly, be honest with ourselves of a distinct possibility of remote learning on day one. And of course, day one has to look better than our last day on June 19th. And so there's lots of work, and in fact, I'm really encouraging our administrators and our and GFEA and just our stakeholders to think about how that can look differently. That will be one of the key tasks tomorrow night with our reopening committee to spend time about what can remote learning look like. Remote learning is going to happen one way or the other, whether it's on day one or whether it's a hybrid model and we're cruising along and then we get hit with a virus and need to close down for one day, 30 days. We just need to be ready on both accounts. This morning, Department of Health had a report that was presented to reporters. And a lot of districts listened into that report. And the top health official in King County basically came out very strongly and says, he said, I don't see it happening. I don't see how you can open schools on the first day. Later on in the presentation, I wouldn't say he softened that approach, but I think he said, until the entire state and our communities make some drastic changes because we are doing so well with our stay-at-home order, social distancing, not mingling, until we get serious about that again, he thinks our spikes will continue. So that was interesting news for us. And again, reinforces, I think, our need to talk about remote learning 2.0. Our goal right now, in the next, within the next week, we need to send another survey out to our families and get a sense of what they're now thinking. You know, I think we're down to really two choices. I don't, at some point, I need to change the word hybrid learning because hybrid learning is going to include remote learning. So even if we start with instruction with students at home, at some point, we're going to bring them back and that is, in a sense, hybrid learning. So we really want to get a sense of that comfort level that parents are going to have, their level of interest. And then the other thing that we've been talking about for the past month is, do we partner with GFEA and partner with perhaps a commercial enterprise of having our own online school? That's, we have a lot more to talk about, but it's certainly something we're doing this summer with our summer school. We've partnered with Accelerates and we're polling our students to see how well that's going. And so there might be parents that say, you know what, I want to be part of Granite Falls School District, but I'd rather homeschool or do our schooling using that model and not really participate in the hybrid or remote learning. So anyway, my point is, we're going to go back out to our parents to sort of let them know the menu of options that we are considering. And then in the meantime, we need to prepare as if we're opening on September 2nd. It won't be 100% of students in classes, but it could be a hybrid model. It could be a very select group of students. It could be our ELL students. It could be a group of special ed students. It could be students that have some sort of intervention that we need to support. Or it could be half of the school. Whatever it is, we are in the process of securing that PPE equipment and discussing spacing while also preparing for remote learning. So, you know, earlier Director Beach and others gave a shout out to the groups that are working. And we are working hard on this and we're trying to involve our stakeholders. And again, great partnership with GFEA on getting ready for this school, for this school year. I guess the final thing I would say is every Tuesday or every other Tuesday, the state superintendent meets with, by Zoom, with all the superintendents in the state. And then either on Tuesday and Wednesday, I meet with the Homish County and EST superintendents. And honestly, today, there's a whole different look and feel among the superintendents than there was two weeks ago. Two weeks ago, as I said earlier, I thought we were cruising along, start getting some things in place. But it is entirely different feel today of the reality that, you know, we might be, we might be starting remotely. And a lot of that will depend on the choices that folks in Washington make in terms of social distancing, wearing masks, and hopefully getting that level down again. Questions or comments?
I have some. Is that, do you want to go, is that the end of your report or?
Yes, it is. Okay. That seems to be what I live and breathe right now.
Okay, I just noticed there were some other pictures and stuff there, so I didn't know if you were.
That was for our committee last week.
Okay, okay. I've got some questions, but board, you can feel free to jump in before I log the question line. Director Beach, your pause if you're saying something, there you go.
Oh, sorry. Actually, I just, I don't know if this is, I guess, you know, I'm going to save my comment for later. I'm going to save my comment for later. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll jump in. So Dr. Milton, thank you for the report thoroughly. I appreciate it. Do you have a target date for that reopening plan? You made mention that we have to give a minimum of two weeks, but I think parents are going to need more than two weeks to prepare if possible.
That's right. I want to bring our plan to you at our August board meeting, but we obviously will have a better sense of what the reality will be. And I think the numbers are really, the health numbers, and we want the health numbers to drive this. We don't want politics to drive this. We want science and health to help guide us on this. So I would just say, please stay tuned. Let me get the survey out to our parents. Let me follow where the trends are going. Keep you up to date on our conversations with our reopening committee and GFEA. And I'll have a better sense, but we do plan to get information out to our parents, like I said, within really the next five days.
So that plan that you're going to present to the board, what is that going to look like? And I guess I just mean, is it a, here's our recommendation, here's everything? Is there going to be options? Is there going to be, you know, is it? Give me some idea of the framework of what that's going to look like.
Well, I have to say that the template is being developed by OSPI and they haven't presented that to us yet. So the actual format, I couldn't tell you. They really are sort of, I feel like they are two days ahead of us on this information. So, but what I do want to come back to you and say, let's say we come to an agreement that it will be hybrid learning. We would lay out the details to you of who would be in classes, on what days, and how we are going to address student needs on the days they're not in the building. And we'll go through the, you know, the state guidance and the, I guess, the rules that they have for us. But I honestly, I can't tell you the format because they haven't even shared that with us yet.
So the reason I asked that question is, I mean, obviously, if the board has to approve it, then the board is going to review it and make sure that they approve it. So what if we look at a section and go, yeah, we don't, we don't agree with that. We think, you know, we want to see this or we, you know, let's do a kindergarten only five-day-a-week program. I'm just throwing that idea. It's not saying necessarily where the board, but I mean, is there, what flexibility or ability, I mean, how does, what does that look like? Because then I would imagine we would need to go maybe back to this committee and then come back to us and see if that's doable.
It would be something.
I don't want to lose time and you get what I'm saying? I don't want to lose time in us kicking it back and then coming back to us, that type of thing.
Right. I would feel pretty comfortable of if you had some feedback that was just, you know, no way we're going to do that, I would get with our stakeholders and, you know, work through that and come back to you most likely at a special board meeting, but yeah.
So I almost think, and I know, I know Director Beach is going to those meetings. And don't we have another board member?
I am as well. I am. I mentioned in my comments that my audio wasn't working.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I almost feel like we need to have a board subcommittee that is a part of that, right? I mean, where, and that subcommittee is, as board members, is also the same way they do legislative, you know, is kind of informing us of the progress and where it's going. And maybe those directors are also a pipeline potentially from the rest of the board to that. I just don't, to me, the worst case scenario is, is that, you know, we get a plan. The board looks at it. The board doesn't feel comfortable with that plan. We kick it back, right? And then we are in that two-week, oh my goodness, we have to make a decision right now because we're in that two-week window, which inevitably isn't going to get enough time for our parents to be able to, you know, set their schedules and do the things that they need to do personally related around that schedule. So I'm just trying to, I'm trying to figure out a way that we can all kind of move at the same time. Does that make sense to you, Dr. Milton?
It does. And I think the two directors who are currently involved would be great, great subcommittee members.
I think at the same time also, I think your role as the superintendent, you're going to share with us the plan as we progress and, you know, email, communication. And so I mean, I'm hoping it's not going to be surprised here at the plan. I hope you're going to like, as we progress, I mean, just like you did tonight. What you just went over is what we went over in our meeting.
Right.
The first meeting was just going over what questions do we not know, I mean, the basics. So hopefully you can, as well as a subcommittee, I hope that, you know, we can trust you to keep us, and I know we can, keep us updated as well. Right?
And that, that's a really great point, Director Butler. And, you know, I just want, I just don't want, I don't want, when that plan comes before us, I want to almost be like, oh, I, you know, it's, we expected this outcome, right? We were all kind of in the loop. We knew this is where we were going. And we all, you know, it's just kind of a formality at that point as much as we can so that we can give, again, our parents as much time as possible. And also, I mean, I don't think it's something we necessarily officially do, but also, you know, kind of deputize you and Director Beach that, hey, you guys as well, you know, you don't necessarily speak for the board because that would be a quorum. But, you know, in those spaces, you know, you guys can certainly, you know, you need and should have a voice and, you know, if you have concerns, to kind of improve that communication back to the rest of us, which I know you would probably do anyway, but I guess I just, I want to say it.
Yeah, you have to be careful how we do it, but yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so as part of that, and as you were talking, Dr. Milton, I was going over the CDC guidelines to schools again. Are we going to have a modified absence policy again? Or are we going to do, I mean, I imagine there's policies that need to kind of go along with whatever plan that we have. Are we going to do those also at that meeting when we approve the plan? You know, here's five policy, board policy changes we need to make?
The State Board of Education is going to be the one that gives us the guidance and OSPI, the guidance on days, hours, and attendance. And the State Board of Ed just yesterday, or I'm sorry, I believe on the 9th, approved some modifications to, you know, to those rules on seat time. So that, for example, they recognize schools are going to be a hybrid model or remote learning. And so if a student, let's just say, one model could be, half the students are in the school on Monday and Tuesday, the other half on Thursday and Friday, let's say. And Wednesday is, you know, probably a deep cleaning day. It's a office hour day. It's a prep time for teachers. What I'm getting at is, so if students are in class for two days a week, they now have three days where they would be on, really, they're on their own. And under, I guess, the normal rules, that really doesn't count as seat time. But they're adjusting their rules so that the expectation is, as educators, we are providing meaningful work for them to be doing during those off days. Could be a project, could be, you know, reading, or I mean, it's a whole list of things. So that will still count as quote unquote, seat time or attendance. OSPI is working on what attendance needs to look like for 2021. So to answer your question, yes, we would be presenting to you, one, if we need to do any policy adoptions, we would be bringing that to you. But most likely, it's going to be changes at the state level.
That makes sense. Okay. Those are all the questions I had. Anyone else have any? I appreciate the good conversation there, Dr. Milton, and looking forward to updates as they come. All right, so not hearing any other thing on that, let's move on to item 3D, which is board reports. Fortunately, Dr. Panakis isn't here, so we don't have a ledger report. Is there anything on the WIA?
Yes, yeah, there is. WI had a meeting on the 9th, Tuesday the 9th. And they have pushed all fall sports back two weeks. So football won't start till September 5th and the other sports won't start till September 7th. Now, having said that, it could change. They have another meeting on the 21st of this month for, you know, any additional changes. And quite frankly, if we're not out of phase three, it's still going to get pushed back. So that's just the way it is right now.
Yeah, and I read in the paper that they were saying that they didn't want a situation where one district is in phase two, one's in phase three, and they want everyone to be in phase three before they feel comfortable moving sports along.
Right. That's where they're at right now. They're kind of in a wait pattern too. So they have pushed back for the time being for now.
All right, any questions relate to the WIA report? We know community report?
I just have a quick, I guess, this is maybe what I would add from my comment from earlier that I mentioned. Most, you're not surprised to know that most of the feedback I'm getting from the community is around the reopening, right? And what's happening? When are we going to find out? What's the timeline? What do I do to prepare? One of the parents that contacted me was for an incoming kindergartner and asked that I pass on the idea, and I've already mentioned this before, but just to mention it here, asked that I pass on the idea of something that another much larger district is doing is kindergarten and our preschool kindergarten. and our preschool kindergarten first grade is going five days a week, while the other grades are going in a hybrid model. And had we considered that? So that was one question because they're trying, their concern is going into kindergarten, but but doing school from home doesn't really feel like kindergarten, right? Um, another parent who contacted me just was wondering about timeline and things and voiced their concern about just trying to figure out and plan for what does childcare look like? And how much do I ask to be reimbursed in my flexible spending account? And even simple questions like that, right? Like, these are just some of the concerns of the parents. And then, um, another person emailed and this person emailed to all of us. But I'll just mention that I did, we did get contacted on the idea that a neighboring district is doing, possibly considering doing a model at the high school, middle school, where they would have more of a cohort type deal where the kids would maybe have like three classes. And I I guess I didn't understand everything, but maybe have less classes for longer periods of time so that there's not quite so much mixing and it would um, reduce a burden on the teachers, you know, as far as instead of 120 to 150, maybe 60 to 90 kids. To be honest, I'm taking all of that information from the email. I haven't spent more than 30 seconds trying to digest it. So I'm just sort of mentioning it to pass that on as different members of the community that have brought things to my attention since our last meeting. So that's what I heard.
Yeah, it's good feedback. Any questions on the information provided on the community report?
Good report.
Yep. Okay. All right, moving on, item, uh, four A unfinished business, we have none. So moving on to new business, uh, elementary handbook. Um, discussion.
Just a quick discussion on that. Um, I looked at it. Well, first I mentioned my daughter somehow made it into a classroom photo on there. Woo, but, um, while I I did attempt to review that, there was a couple of things that I called Dr. Middleton on prior to this meeting. Um, one was just a formatting issue on the district goals page. Um, I think that's been taken care of. And the other was to insert where in the section that talks about absences and or tardies and absences, it talks about criteria of when students should not come to school. And, um, just incorporating, making sure we incorporate those COVID symptoms and those questions that we'll be asking daily into those handbooks. And I believe that that change was made before today's meeting in all the handbooks, not just fever of 100 degrees and or vomiting and diarrhea in the last 24 hours. But it now has incorporated all COVID questions in there, uh, I believe.
That is, that is correct.
Yeah.
Set down with Melanie right after our call. And so those handbooks would include COVID symptoms.
I was going to ask about that. I was going to see if we wanted to do their add like just temporary addendum. Are we just going to, I mean, just change it next after next year? But if we if it's already done, it's fine. I was going to ask about COVID.
You think COVID is going to be done next year?
Yeah.
No, after next year, hopefully. I just don't know if we just want to like add it or just say, you know, add an addendum until the crisis is over. I don't, but if it's in, it's in, it's fine.
Well, it might spread around and around if people, you know, depending on the availability of vaccine and stuff. So I don't know. I mean, it's a handbook.
No, it's fine. I that was, because I was going to talk about it too, but you, that way works just as fine.
Um, so the, as a tag to that, and great catch, because that was one of the things I was going to bring up as well, Director Veach. Um, the existing absence, are we modifying that language? Because we're really heavily saying, I mean, it's it's a little heavy handed. Um, students with who acquire an excessive number of excuse absences may be placed on attendance contact and reported to juvenile court system. I mean, don't we want a softer touch on that now to say, hey, listen, if you meet this criteria, listen, stay at home, we'll figure it out.
Right, um, you know, I I think we're we're basically rolling up or rolling over the handbook from this year, but we certainly would modify depending on how things land. So I I'm okay with the language. Um, we will certainly adjust though as as needed.
Is that language from the BECA law? Is that why it's in there? Like, so have there been like, I don't know, some sort of modification to the school districts requirements for the BECA law that we could call out in that?
They're they're, um, looking at Melanie right now who oversees our BECA and she's, they're not enforcing them at the.
At the court level.
Yeah, at the court level.
Well, they're not even, they're not doing anything about it. We probably don't want to call that out in the handbook.
No.
So I hear you say you're comfortable with the language as it is, um, Dr. M.
I I think it's good to leave in, um, even if we're doing remote learning. I mean, it it might be, you know, might just be words, but, you know, it's something that's that's in there. And we want to make sure our families are engaged and they don't fall off the radar if we go to remote learning again.
Agreed, yeah. I guess I was just wondering if we wanted to put something in there that says, hey, listen, you know, due to a sickness or COVID or whatever, you're not feeling well, you know, we encourage you to stay at home or, I mean, I I don't know how much someone is reviewing the handbook to to make their their decisions, but I guess I just, you know.
Right, and you know, when it came time for parent communication, family communication in the spring, we certainly provided that out and that softer touch.
Yeah, okay. Um, the other question that I had is the harassment intimidation bullying section. Don't nowhere did I see the 800 number to report, um, harassment, intimidation or bullying. Um, and I know that we have one where someone can anonymously or any reference to it. Shouldn't we include, oh, wait, hold on.
It's in a highlighted area.
It's in the highlighted area. That's why I didn't see it. Okay. Perfect. Sorry about that. I'm just scrolling through to see if I highlighted anything else. What? So are we, who's our our title nine coordinator?
Uh, that was Dr. Wolverton in the past, and there'll be this lesson this time.
So do we want, because it just says in the, I'm looking at page 14, it says, what should I do if I believe my child's being discriminated against? You should report your concerns to your child's teacher or principal immediately. Let's allow school to respond to the situation as soon as possible. If you're not meet with the teacher or principal, you can always contact your school district's main office. Each school district will have someone responsible responding complaints about discrimination. Sometimes this person is called the title X, title nine, sorry, coordinator or for issues related disability, section 504 coordinator. I mean, do we want to, or I guess, shouldn't we call those people out so that they don't have to go on like a mission trip to figure out who those people are?
In the handbook in another section.
Yeah.
It's, there's a list of personnel in another section of the handbook that specifically says.
Let me scroll.
Those roles. We can, we can certainly place it there. That's not an issue.
I just don't, you know, I I want to make the information as as readily accessible to someone who's, you know, in crisis and feels like they need to contact us as possible. Again, I'm guessing most people would get online or do something like that quicker than this and probably aren't going to handbook, but, you know, um, make it as as accessible as possible.
We'll make that too.
I'm just scrolling to see if I'd see it. Um, that was all I had. So, Dr. M, um, do we want to, obviously, there's a couple of changes, the update for the COVID language as well as the, um, kind of the updates we just talked about. Um, is this a a first reading where we can come back and see that and make a final? Or are you asking us to approve it and just kind of you got it type of thing?
I'm comfortable with approval. We got it.
Okay. Um, we're still in discussion, the board. Do you guys feel comfortable with that? See, not.
I do. I think that, I mean, the COVID questions were written already by the health department. We're just kind of copy pasting those in, right? So it's not our language to review, probably. Um, and I trust that that, you know, Melanie and Dr. Middleton will will make the changes they've agreed to. So I think we're okay with that. But trust but verify. I'll probably look at it next month.
As expected.
Yeah, I'll take a look.
Okay, well, um, I would like to make a motion then that we approve the elementary handbook with the modifications discussed, um, at the meet during the meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, motion's been made and seconded to approve the hand, elementary handbook with modifications. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, yes. Um, secondary handbook, uh, a lot of this information is just a carryover. So my comments for that and and as well as the the other handbooks is essentially the same.
And we would make the respective changes.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, is there any other discussion? We're on item three B. Is there any other discussion that we need to have related to the secondary handbook?
Five B.
Did I say five B? I'm sorry.
You said three B.
Five B. Okay. Hearing none.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
Make a motion, accept, uh, uh, item five B, secondary handbook.
Was been made to accept item five B, secondary handbook. Is there a second?
I'll second that one.
Was been main seconded by Director Green. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, item five C, activities and athletic handbook. We are in discussion. So questions, concerns, comments?
For me, my comment is I feel disappointed that for the second year in a row, I did not review all the handbooks because it's too much reading for one meeting. So either in the future, can we, um, either separate them out or have them like further ahead so that we have the time to review it? Because I'll be honest, I mean, I I scrolled through it, but I didn't give it as much of a reading as I probably should.
And and we would have highlighted, uh, as I wrote in that recommendation, uh, really, there are no substantive changes from last year, uh, otherwise we would have highlighted that.
Yeah.
I keep trying. Maybe I shouldn't start at the beginning every single time. Maybe I should start in the middle or start with the athletics handbook. I'm not sure. But either way, it's a lot.
Dr. M, one, one, one potential thing, I don't know, maybe we can do in the future is a first and second reading on this, on the handbooks with, as you said, like highlights and stuff like that. Then that gives us tons of time to review it. We know the changes and, you know, gives us a couple of meanings to be able to digest it if if we can work that time wise.
Yeah.
Um, okay, um, is there anything we need to talk about in the activities, athletics handbook?
Nothing stood out to me.
I did have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
I remember we talked about fee changes previously. Are those, are they reflected in this handbook? You know, we talked about like, you know.
I do remember us voting about that, yeah.
They are.
Yeah, are they are they reflected? They're okay. That was my only concern. I don't, I didn't have the actual data in front of me, but I remember if I make sure they're reflected in here. That was my only question.
Okay. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the activities and athletic handbook. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the activities and athletic handbook. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
As we're out. All right, item five D, high school coaches handbook, discussion. Do we have any?
I've never seen, did we do this before? I've never seen this before. This was new to me.
I'm not sure if you have or not, but I was looking at it earlier in the year and saw some things that just needed to be more formatting than anything, as well as bringing some, uh, more current dates and then including our new tagline.
Yeah, I like it. I just had never seen it before in all my years of being on the board. Carl, have you seen it before?
I have not, no.
Okay. I read it, it seemed fine. I was just curious about that.
Well, I'm happy to have been able to, uh, kind of review it.
Um, I don't, I'm looking through, I didn't highlight anything in it. So I think I'm just scrolling through to get to the last page to see if I did highlight anything. Nope, okay. Is there anyone prepared to make a motion?
Make a motion, we accept, uh, item five D, high school coaches handbook.
Was been made to accept item five D, high school coaches handbook. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made.
Are you looking at me?
I'm looking at a a wall of of faces, Director Veach. Was made and seconded by Director Veach. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right.
Director Green, you need to have a turn.
I did, I took a turn.
All right, moving on, item five E, annual organizational meeting. Um, item one, call for nominations for president. Um, I personally would, um, if I could be so bold, I'd like to make a nomination of Director Butler for president.
I'm okay with that. I'm good with that.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, so this is a roll call vote, so, um, I'll call.
Does that nomination need to be seconded? Because I didn't hear it seconded.
Oh, I'd like to second the nomination of
Gurnit!
Director Butler as the president and chair of the board.
All right, I guess I should say any other nominations going once, going twice? Sold. Okay, so, uh, roll call vote on the election for president. So, um, I will call your name. And if you, uh, agree with how the director of the president, it's always a weird thing to do. So, yeah, uh, Director Veach.
Aye.
Director Green.
Aye.
Director Butler.
Aye.
Director Kerry.
How excited?
I will also vote aye. Congratulations, Director Butler.
Third time's a charm.
I was there, I'd be handing you the gavel right now. Um, so I think you take it, don't, don't you take it from here as the new president?
Yep, I just assumed, uh, the office of the new president. That's me, so. All right, um, item three, assumption of office by new president. That's me. Item four, call for nomination for vice president. I'd like to open the the board up for call for nomination for vice president. So I have any nominations?
I would like to nominate Tina Veach for vice president.
Okay, can I get a second for that nomination?
I will second that nomination.
All right, are there any other calls for vice nomination for vice president? One, two, three times I said that. All right, perfect. Um, we will now, um, elect a vice president, uh, we'll do by roll call vote. Start with Director Green.
Um, you have a second? It's been seconded.
Well, no, now with a roll call vote, um, are you, uh, all in favor of Tina Veach, Director Green?
Aye.
All right, Director Kerry?
Aye.
Director Veach?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. Congratulations, Director Veach. Um, now we shall call for nomination for president pro tem. Um, just to clarify, this role is somebody to take over the meeting in case Director Veach and I are both absent. Um, in that case, there would still be three members, there'd be, there'd be a quorum, so we need to have someone who would take over. Can I call for nomination for president pro tem?
I'd like to nominate Dr. Panagis.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, are there any other nominations for president pro tem? Going once, twice, all right. Uh, now we shall call for election to president pro tem. All in favor, Director Panagis as president pro tem? Uh, Director Veach?
Aye.
Director Kerry?
Aye.
Uh, Director Green?
Aye.
And aye as well. All right, congratulations to Director, uh, Dr. Panagis for president pro tem. Um, we should now call for nominations for legislative representative. Do you have any nominations for elective, elect, no, do you have any nominations for legislative representative?
You know, on my term on the board, I've never been the ledge rep. And I would definitely like to, um, do that, especially in hopes of trying to. Do that, especially in hopes of trying to get some visualization to our lack of appropriate regionalization factor. So. If it's not weird, I'd like to nominate myself for that role.
I'll second that.
Oh, I would. Any other nominations for legislative representative? All right, no other nominations. So this is not a roll call vote, so we'll just proclaim our vote together. All in favor, Director Kerry as legislative representative, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. All right, call for nominations for WIAA representative. Seventy nominations for WIAA representative.
Director Green. Would you, Director Green, would you prefer to? Community or or WIAA? With Dr. Panegis not here, I guess you get to choose.
Yeah, Dave, what do you want to do?
For community. I'd like to switch.
I will nominate Director Panegis as our WIA representative.
I think you'll like that.
Yeah. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All right, are there any other nominations for WIAA representative?
This is what happens when unfortunately you can't show up to a meeting.
Yeah, I was kind of worried my 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 audio wouldn't work. Okay, I'll call for the election. Again, this is not a roll call vote, just consent or just out loud. So all in favor of Director Panegis as WIAA representative, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, passes. Call for nominations for community liaison. Anyone like to nominate Director Green?
I would like to nominate Director Green as the community liaison.
I'll second that. Oh, oh, Carl. No, no. You you got it, Carl. All right. Any other nominations? All right, call the vote for community liaison Director Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations. All right, now we're going to item 14 on the reorganization or sorry, organization meeting. Call for board preferences on allocating allocations to school. One of the nice things about the Grand Falls School District is the direct number of directors matches nicely to the number of schools. And as such, each year, a director adopts a school to to really be a. A support for that school to go to their events and to work for for them on the board. That being said, let's discuss preferences before we assign the the schools. Let's just go around. Director Veach, remind us, you know, what school you were last year and if you have a preference this year.
So this past year, for what it was, I was the representative for the high school. I have kids both that I have two kids that are junior and senior in high school, and then I have one. That will be in middle school and one that will be at Monte Cristo. So I would prefer to do one of the schools that my kids. Attend because I'm already attending their events, but I would be happy to represent any of the schools.
Okay. Director Kerry, you want to remind us what yours was and if you have any preference?
I believe mine last year was Monte Cristo. And if I'm wrong on that, I apologize. But I will take whatever school. Whatever school works best for the board. If someone has a strong preference, I'm very willing to take another school. Whatever that school and let that person have whatever they prefer.
Okay, Director Green, you want to remind us what yours was and if you have any preference?
I was Crossroads. I've also done the high school and the middle school, so I kind of. This year would be interested in doing one of the elementaries. I have no preference.
Okay, I I was the middle school last year, and then I've done all the schools now. I think like Director Kerry, we've been around enough where we've done all the schools. So I'm willing to serve anywhere. So Director Veach, which one? I mean, it sounds like you can kind of got your pick. Did you want middle school or Monte Cristo? Which which one do you think?
Do you know, I think I'd like to do the middle school.
Okay, all right, okay.
Natalie's first year at the middle school, so that'll be nice for me to be able to be there with her.
Okay. I've done all the schools. Well, Director Green, did you want to pick the elementary school that you'd like to do since you haven't done any of those?
Monte Cristo. How's that?
Okay, all right, yeah, perfect. Okay, Director Kerry, did you have a preference?
Um, I'll do Mountain Way.
Mountain Way, okay.
Unless you want. Unless you want.
Not that I I did that most recently. I I wouldn't mind doing the high school. I haven't done that one in a while.
Okay.
Okay, and then that leaves Director Panegis with Monte Cristo, which I know he has an affinity for that school anyway. Crossroads, I meant Crossroads, sorry. All right. So Melanie, I'd make sure you caught this. So we're gonna go with. Director Kerry, Mountain Way, Director Green at Monte Cristo, Director Veach at the middle school, I'll be at the high school, and Director Panegis at Crossroads. All right. All right, so that finishes our annual organization meeting. Move on to six consent agenda. We have some additions. Did everyone get those additions in the email?
Yes.
Is there any any discussion on the consent agenda with the additions?
I did not have any.
Okay, this time I will entertain a motion to accept the content, the consent agenda with the additions.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda with the additions that were emailed to the board.
Okay, perfect.
I'll second that.
So a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Perfect, and we're done at 7:56 PM. I'd like to adjourn our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Congratulations, Director Veach, Director Butler.
Yay. All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.